We're gonna start this meeting at six thirty. We are recording this meeting. All members are in attendance. Brendan will be right back. And would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, so on to citizen's statements and petitions. Just asking if anybody in the room or online would like to speak to the board.
This is Mike and Prisolenzulo, eleven Sandra Circle. We've had an issue ongoing with the gentleman at eight Sandra Circle. John Erickson has been involved. He just sent his latest email. Hopefully you've got a copy of it and basically all the enforcements that he put in place four or five months ago, now his latest email says it's all fine, no problem. The gentleman there has a large portable garage that did not meet zoning. No permits. He's a builder. If anybody knows it, permits should be done. It's him. His first enforcement letter said that he had forty-five days to move the cover it. That's probably two months past now. It's still there. It's been very disappointing that I started this in November of 2024. If John Erickson had come out in a reasonable time, it could have saved everybody a lot of time and effort on this.
And a commercial operation too.
And you know, he's running a commercial operation out of there. I sent pictures of his second pickup truck with commercial equipment attached to it. And John said, well, it's his personal pickup truck. You know, is it personal one day and commercial the next? I mean, I sent the pictures.
Snowplains.
So. So we're just disappointed. All the budding neighbors are very disappointed of what it looks like now. We had a beautiful street on Sandra Circle and now it's somewhat of a construction site. So that's just what we had to say.
We wanted to make sure you had that that chance to say it. Unfortunately, since it's not an agenda item, the board can't deliberate on it. But I have just passed that packet of information, including the photos and the email history around to the board so that they can review it. And it's still, yeah, Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, and thank you, Mike, for this. It's ongoing enforcement action. So like Chair said, we can't, we can't do a ton right now. But in Mr. Erickson's email, he talked about filing a formal request for zoning enforcement, which you you have already. So there's a form to appeal his decision or lack of decision. So I'll make sure that you have that and that's our next step. That's the next step for you. So it's an ongoing enforcement action, like I said, but I'll make sure you have all the all the tools you need.
Thank you for your help. Really appreciate it.
Mike, we really appreciate you coming on to voice your opinion. I know this is hard to do in public, but just want you to know that we're listening and and the board will review and Jeremy will continue pursuing.
Okay, I mean, we've been residents for over thirty-eight years, a great town, and we just want to keep it that way, especially on our street. We have great neighbors and we had a very beautiful street and now it's not the same anymore.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right. Seeing as there's none, we appreciate your time tonight. We'll move on to number three, which is community events and announcements. So the second annual scarecrow contest, which you can sign up by emailing the cultural council at mendenma.gov, which is running now. So the signup period is running now through September twenty-seventh. And we will ask that you display your scarecrow from October first to October thirty-first. And the winner is going to be announced on October twenty-seventh. So Katie has volunteered to build scarecrows for the select board. Of the select board, right, not for the select board. So if you could consider, yes. It's a slightly different thing than contributing. It will be a representation of you. And so how you want to be represented, you know, we sort of chatted a little bit like.
I actually joked, I said, we could put Mike in an antico polo.
You know, and you know, maybe Jason with a hoodie and a water bottle and Brendan with a flannel. Right, they are very, we are kind of very predictable individuals as far as our style goes. So maybe, maybe you could help her out with that. I think that would be pretty awesome. All right, so the townwide scavenger hunt will be Sunday, September twenty-first. That's this Sunday from nine to twelve P M. The annual Senior Citizens Day is also this Sunday and the senior of the year reception. And that'll take place at eleven thirty A M at Unitarian Church of Mendon, which is in Oxbridge. Oh, this one right here. Yeah, okay. To bridge that together. Thirteen Maple Street, right, right up the street from Town Hall. They have a big presence right in the middle of town. You can't miss them. Space is limited, so please call five zero eight four seven eight six one seven five to sign up. I imagine that is, it's full. So call last week. Because now it is full. Well, that's awesome. That'll be a really fun event. All right, yes.
So can I just point out that even though these two events overlap, people can do both if if people have signed up for the Senior Citizens Day lunch. The scavenger hunt is expected to take under an hour and it's self-guided. So people can do both.
Excellent. Thank you. And it's what or the Town Hall where you meet?
I don't remember, but yeah, it's.
I'll find out.
Thank you.
I should look because I'm planning to go, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe it is probably.
It's also in the same area. It will be actually walking around. You know, this, the triangle, Maple Street and whatnot. So people can potentially spiral around and end up with the unit area. Dartsex block. Excellent. Good parking there.
Eleven sites.
All right. Awesome. So looking forward to that. Looking forward to see people wander around town. That's kind of a rare sight. Okay, so number four, we're going to do appointments. And Jeremy, do you want to talk about Brianna before we do the?
Yeah, certainly. So we've had quite the time finding an assistant treasurer collector in the last thirteen, fourteen months. And Brianna is a, you know, a great candidate who passed all our background checks already. You'll notice the vote is pending a successful background check, but she has already been bonded. Our approved to be bonded, which has been the hurdle for a number of candidates. So that's proved to be the more difficult hurdle. So she's got a great background. Tracy's excited to treasure collector is excited to work with her. Jen O'Neill is on if you have any other questions about her candidacy. But I met with her in her second round interview and proudly bring her to the board as a as a endorsed candidate. In this position is in the Town Hall.
And when when will that start?
We have a start date, Jen?
So we have asked her to start on or before September twenty-ninth, but it does still require the background check to be complete, which I know they're they're very close to completing. But I know she's very excited to be starting.
Yeah, more bandwidth, more more hands. Always helpful.
Like the treasurer collector's office was closed yesterday because Tracy took a vacation day as one's entitled to, and the whole office was closed all day because we're a one-person office right now.
So I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Brianna Bellin.
Move to appoint Brianna Bellin as full-time assistant treasurer collector at the rate of twenty-seven dollars and five cents per hour and a successful background check. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Welcome to the Mendon family, Brianna. And next we have Jennifer Talamidi as the, is that correct? Okay, awesome. As the full-time outreach coordinator, another position that we were really hoping to fill soon. And so she's here. If you'd like to come up and chat.
Hi, everyone.
Hello. We know this is the most fun part of getting this job.
So if you could just both please introduce yourselves.
Sure. Amy Wilson Kent, senior senior center director.
And Jennifer Talamidi, candidate.
So tell us a little bit about yourself now. I mean, you you've interviewed, you're qualified. Is there anything that you want to ask us or?
Ah, no, I've been a resident of the town for over seven years now. So very familiar with how things operate. I have sat on the board for the council on aging previously. So really excited to just now officially be part of serving the seniors of the town of Mendon.
And Amy, did you?
We're, my co-chair, Earl Perlman, couldn't be here tonight, but he wholeheartedly, you know, endorses this appointment. Again, Jennifer, having been on our board for two years. This is before the pandemic, so we were able to see what she was able to do then. And then, you know, your life took a different turn and so we had to lose her, but I'm thrilled to have her back.
Awesome. So she can just die right in. All right, well, I'd be looking for a motion to appoint.
I move to appoint Jennifer Talamidi as a full-time outreach coordinator at a rate of twenty-three dollars per hour pending successful background check.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Welcome to the Mendon family again. Thank you very much for joining us.
And may I ask, I know you're going to be there. Is someone else going to be to present? We have a couple, we have the citation and we have the acclamation, two citations.
So I'm going to be traveling to Nebraska. So if you're available, I would love for you to represent us.
Together one of the scarecrows.
I mean, if if need be, I can do it too.
Okay, I mean, I'm I'm happy to read whatever needs to be read.
There'll be three. There'll be three. So I could even have Earl Perlman's coming. So he's our co-chair, so he could possibly.
Yeah, we'll see. I know it's nice to to rotate through a few different voices, so I'm, yes.
All right, rock, paper, scissors it is. Thank you very much.
So much, everyone. Thank you.
So Jeremy's going to talk a little bit about the cultural council.
Yeah, so we've had an opening on the cultural council posted quite some time. We are coming up on grant deadlines where we need a five-member board for to be able to be eligible for cultural council grants from the state. We have a four-member board. So there's been a big push from particularly Joanne LaMoss on the on the cultural council and then Ellen Agro and myself trying to find folks. So we had an interest party, met with the chair and then was recommended to to be appointed. The grant period ends a few days after our next, your next meeting. So getting an appointment right really helps us get that get that through. So it will be, once she gets sworn in and passes her ethics training, which I'm not sure if she has or has not already, she's currently.
She's already on the board, so.
Just because you're on a board and employee doesn't mean you're current. So yeah, we'd be looking for a three-year term to expire in June of twenty-eight.
So I'd be looking for a motion.
To appoint Karen Reed to the cultural council for a three-year term expiring in June thirty of twenty-twenty-eight. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Welcome Karen to the cultural council.
Thank you, Karen, for stepping up again. I know you're doing a lot for the.
She is. What are you here for? Cook Cemetery. We're going to skip forward to number eleven, so this gentleman doesn't have to wait through our boring process.
Only fitting, I suppose, that we talk about cemetery after senior center.
So you're here to donate?
Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Gary Smith and I am a local real estate broker. And one of my clients has been expressing his desire to see a cemetery exist in the town of, new cemetery created in the town of Mendon. Since we are out of space and you are mandated by Master of Law to have a cemetery, but you have done nothing about it for the past ten years that we've been trying to get this done. So maybe, just maybe, with some money, you'll get something. They have been before, three boards of selectmen previously and nothing was done. Maybe you'll be different. In any case, I sold a piece of property for this gentleman and he is donating the proceeds towards that cause.
Well, we will happily accept the proceed. We do appreciate it. I can promise you that because select board member Rolie has been adamant that we also do something about the cemetery. It said it has come up multiple times this year and it made its way on to the goal document at goal documents, drawing up time this year as well. So I don't know what that really means, other than we need to reform the cemetery committee. It's been kind of stagnant for a very long time. And then, yeah, take an analysis. So this isn't specifically for Cook Cemetery. This is for an expansion of a new cemetery.
No.
Or this is to expand that space.
Cemetery land.
So, okay. So, yeah, so Jeremy, yeah, so thank you.
We've started task force and really trying to get time and Gary's on it as well. So we're going to, this will kick off our process and we'll get, we'll get the group together and involve stakeholders from around town that have been suggested by some select board members, or suggested by staff. And then, so this would be for improvements, expansion at Cook Cemetery. So what the motion would be, would be to establish a gift fund specific to this and then to accept the donation on behalf of the town into the gift fund and then expend it consistent with with the gift, which is to improvements and expansion of Cook Cemetery.
If I could just ask, while we have you here, Gary, I know you and I have spoken about this off and on for more than ten years. Same thing with Jean Berthold before she retired, that the Cook Cemetery is that particular piece of land, which is off of kind of behind Cemetery Street and Providence Road. The Barney property really is the groundwater and the topography is perfect.
The good that the state requirements, the hardest one to meet, especially in our town, is the water table has to exceed eight, be eight feet or more. That's really hard to find in Mendon. As a Realtor in Mendon, I can tell you that the water table in Mendon is generally around four feet. And over there, it's limitless. I mean, there's, we've already done, Gannet's have already paid for testing some years ago. And this is just, the water table is non-existent. It's just so far down.
And another great thing about that particular piece of land is the town already owns it.
It's ten acres that the town already owns. The problem with this land, it doesn't have to be a problem, but it's one that needs to be examined, is the access. It's it's accessed by the old Thayer Road, which ends up coming out off of Eighth Street ultimately. Now, we've done some, Alan Tatro had done some research a long time ago. Other people have researched it in town. The road seems to have been legally abandoned or discontinued. I'm not, I never clear which one is which, by the town, which required a vote. So now that means that the town does not no longer owns the access to that. However, there's a number of ways to approach that. You can take, you can take the road back by eminent domain because it's absolutely necessary to have it. Or my understanding of the law is you can't landlock a piece of land. So I think the owners, which would be the town of Mendon, have the right to access that property.
We've received legal opinions in the past that, for all the reasons you spoke, even if there was a vote, you can't, you may abandon the road as making it a public way, but you can't abandon the access. So we have the access.
Okay.
And we've already, we've already spoken to the, to the new highway surveyor who's going to be on our committee. And we're going to get this done.
Excellent. My, my personal feelings are because it's a relatively remote location that you should plan the cemetery in such a way that it is immune to or as much immune as possible to vandalism by having horizontal headstones, something that cannot be toppled over or defaced easily, easy, most importantly, easy to maintain. So that's, to me, that's kind of my, my agenda, is to see that that happens. But there was a time when my client was going to pay for all the engineering to get this done. But that was over ten years ago and things have changed. But at least this will do something to get started.
And maybe, maybe prompt other people to donate as well. All right. All right. Yeah, so I would be looking for a motion to establish a gift account.
Move to establish a gift account for Cook Cemetery and accept a donation for Cook Cemetery improvements for Gary Smith in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Actually, Gary Smith's client.
It's just written wrong. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? So we thank your client. We thank you, Gary, for coming out to talk to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Hey Dave, we didn't forget about you. Let me go back. Um, all right, so the police department gift account and donation acceptance. Dave's online to talk about what this gift is.
So I talked to Jeremy last week. Just want to establish a gift account. Every now and then we get checks in for various things, things that we've done. And people just feel like they want to do something to give back to the police department of the town. Most recently, we have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar check. I reached out to the people who donated, so I don't know if they want to be public or not yet. So we can discuss that at the next meeting. But the point today is just to establish a gift account. And what I talked to Jeremy about is I'd like to do that. So instead of, we used to give it either to the union or fund something and we weren't sure to really, we couldn't really track the money that was donated. I think with this, I'd like to do it so, you know, we need to do AED replace and we have a gift account set up. We can use those funds to do that. And at the same time, you know, as we accept the gifts in, we recognize the people. But then when I actually purchase something like an AED, we can do a public recognition for that too and say, you know, thanks to these people who donated, this was able to be placed at, you know, in the prime cruiser responder, cruiser S two or something like that, you know, and or at the police station. So then people know where the donations are going and they feel good about what they've done to contribute to public safety and helping out the town.
Generally, Chief, these these donations are, you know, for the good of the town, right? They're typically not to go do one particular thing, right?
No, so, yeah, they're usually just to the police department that they want to give back to something because, say, an officer, I don't know, building checks, we have, we do building checks and we just offer that as a service for the residents period. Some people have appreciated that, you know, over the years and said, hey, here's a hundred-dollar donation. And a lot of times I can't accept it because I don't have anything for it. They just want to give back and have public safety do something with it, you know, good towards the town. So that's kind of why I wanted to set it up for, there's something like AEDs or anything that we could do to increase public safety. And I mean, the fire department, they want to do the same thing too because I know they probably, every now and then, will get people that want to donate to them too.
I think it's a, I think it's a good idea.
It's just a good way of tracking those those funds that come in and recognizing the residents who donated.
So I'd be looking for a motion to open a gift account for the Mendon Police Department. We're not accepting anything at the moment.
I move to open the gift account for the Mendon Police Department.
Discussion?
I think I said this last time, we talked about a gift account, but there was recent changes in legislation and DLS guidance on gift accounts. And once you receive money into a gift account, you can spend it without further appropriation. So once we get money in, we will set up a budget on our ledger and then we can go and spend that money. So it's not, it's not that we have to go to town meeting and get that money appropriated for us to be able to spend. Once you accept the donation, that allows the town to spend it.
Question on this, is there any guidance or rules about whether or not names have to be disclosed for donations?
They don't have to be. So so treasurer, the accountant, likely I will know. And if individuals want, even if they stay anonymous, we will still issue them a tax letter because this is tax deductible for them as we're a five-one-C-four. If the board is not comfortable accepting an anonymous donation for whatever reason, you have, you can not accept it. So that's, that's the kind of check on it. But yeah, there's no, there's no limit on use or dollar amount for anonymous.
And like, I'm going to set up a policy too with our accreditation policies that whenever we want to go put the funds towards something, I'll go to the town administrator and the board. And those funds won't be spent without a public acknowledgement of it and go into the board. So everybody knows what those funds are being used for. And I'll set that in our policy so it lives beyond me.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. So let's go back to number five, meeting minutes for approval. August twentieth, twenty-twenty-five was circulated. Were there any changes that need to be made?
So there were, yeah, some, just the, some names were in there that need correction. So mine are.
And there were title changes and Katie made changes.
Right, so, yeah, I'd be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes on August twenty, twenty-five as amended.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Meeting minutes have passed. And number six is the September third, twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes circulation. We're in your packet. Do you send any changes to Katie? All right, Carl. Come on up and join us for number seven, noise bylaw presentation. And I did not launch team, so I'm going to slow. Oh, she's got it. I don't got it. Great.
So do I click the mouse button to advance it?
Just on the screen and then it will go forward.
Okay, great. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Carl Hummel, fifteen Misco Road. I'm here as the vice chair of the bylaw, general bylaw review committee. Tonight's presentation is.
Hey Carl, can I stop you for one second? Can you share?
Yeah, I'm going to have to share from here, right?
From the mouse right there.
Oh, sorry.
That mouse. All right. Thank you.
Okay, we're all set now. Great. I'm here to speak about a, what I would call a noise ordinance or a noise bylaw. Mendon has bylaws that set up ordinances, but almost everybody talks colloquially about a noise ordinance. So the background. Okay, how do I go backwards? Here we go. Is there a way to get rid of that there? Over the past couple of years, we've had citizens talking about noise issues to members of the town staff here at Town Hall, the select board. And I've heard it talking to people on site box with the Conservation Commission about an increase in noise pollution. So the goal is that Mendon is a rural community and people would like it to stay that way as far as where they're living. Without a local bylaw, the Mendon police are only able to issue a criminal citation based on state laws, AKA drunken disorderly kind of complaints, which means that it's a criminal thing, that they get booked, fingerprinted. And that's a step that we would like our police to be very reluctant to do if someone's having a loud party. With a local bylaw, we would be able to designate an enforcement officer who would be able to issue a ticket similar to the way we issue parking tickets. There's a bylaw regulating traffic, parking, that we can say, if you're in a handicap spot or if you're someplace you're not supposed to be, we can write you a ticket. What I'm going to be doing tonight is I'm going to tell you, this is the part of the presentation where I tell you what I'm going to tell you, then I'll tell you. And then at the end, there won't be a quiz because this isn't mandatory training, but you'll have a chance to ask questions. So I'd ask you to hold any questions you have for the first couple of introductory slides, which will allow me to lay out what the high-level process is that I'm in the GB. So I'd ask you to hold any questions you have for the first couple of introductory slides, which will allow me to lay out what the high level process is that I'm in the GBRC is proposing. And Police Chief Kersey and Jason have also reviewed this presentation. Then there'll be questions about the process. Then for each of the open issues that I've identified, there'll be a slide. And if you want, you can take the opportunity to talk about that, or you can wait until I go through the slides. So the second half of it, you can ask questions at the end. Then I'll say, here's the final summary. Then if you have any final questions, at the end of the deck, there are the links that Chief Kersey and I came up with that we use to generate the information for this slide. So questions before I start doing the no question block. Okay. So the goal is to create and present and get approved at a town meeting, a bylaw that will improve the rural character of Mendon life. It will clearly describe the allowable and prohibited activities. And it'll be readily enforceable by a Mendon enforcement officer. The state regulations currently say that, or the police chief's position is he can only enforce a particular Massachusetts state law with a criminal charge. Air pollution is defined by the Department of Environmental Protection. They have in the past interpreted excessive noise as an air pollution issue regulated by a particular DEP regulation. There was a policy written in nineteen nine on it, but that's sort of like wandered off their website and I can't find it anymore. And the reason, I believe, is because most towns that are concerned have created and passed a local ordinance or bylaw that allows them to regulate what the activity is. Otherwise, DEP would be getting a phone call saying, could you please send a state enforcement officer out because my neighbor's making too much noise? So what we have done so far, the GBRC has received input from citizens and Mendon staffers. We, it's reached out for the past couple of months and gotten a lot of input from Chief Kersey. Chief Kersey and I have surveyed a whole lot of other municipalities existing and proposed bylaws. And then I'm presenting here to you tonight. What's next is you'll be giving me feedback. It'll be in the meeting minutes and I'll be able to review the video. You'll help me to direct further investigation with other municipal stakeholders. By stakeholders, I mean people who work in Town Hall, other boards and commissions, who are going to be interested in how the noise ordinance gets created and then enforced within Mendon. The GBRC will create a first draft and will create a slide deck, taking parts of this and modifying it. I hope I can get a deck that has the official town seal and looks nicer than just straight text.
We're gonna do it.
I've had a staff member ask me if they can work on unified branding for public presentations. And I said, thank you.
We need something we can put up at town meeting and not be embarrassed by that has the town seal, the town colors. We can use the assets from the brand new website, stuff like that. So after the first draft is created, it gets reviewed by all of those municipal staff stakeholders who provided input. And at that point, we're ready to announce a public meeting, not a public hearing, but a public meeting that we advertise on Facebook. You've announced, we put it in maybe, maybe a newspaper, the other mechanisms, so that people who are interested in noise in Mendon can come here and express their input and how they believe, what they believe should be in and not in the particular ordinance. After we have at least one public meeting, we'll create a second draft incorporating public feedback. The Select Board may or may not review it. We'll get it in very good shape and then at some point have that final draft reviewed by Town Council. The goal is that Town Council gets something that Tom, me, and the other members of the GBRC think is very legal. We're going to do this by, of course, swiping other municipalities and cutting and pasting from them. But the ultimate goal that we would have a, an article on the town meeting, we're shooting for the May town meeting next, next year. So that'll give us plenty of time from the fall to talk to municipal staffers and then have public meetings, meeting with citizens during the winter and spring. So there are two types of open issues. The first one is there are enforcement issues, questions about how the town is going to craft and enforce the bylaw. This is stuff that the municipal staff, the Select Board, we decide on it. And you'll understand why when we get to those issues are. Then there are the particular bylaw issues, questions about what the bylaw will prohibit, what times we should be restricting noises, what types of noises, things like that. Those we can have opinions on, but I feel strongly that those should be finalized after we get substantial public input. So I'll go through the list of enforcement issues. The ones that we as a municipality should decide before the first public hearing are, who will take the noise complaint walls? What equipment is needed by the enforcement officer? What will the fines be? What will the appeal process be and what types of noises are allowable? In other words, what types of noises are going to be excluded from a noise bylaw? The open issues that we will solicit public input from at a public meeting are, where will the noise be measured? Is there an absolute decibel level or a threshold relative to ambient background? Are there different thresholds that we should set for people who are doing residential work, like home repair? Should contractors who have a building permit or contractors who are hired by homeowner? Should they have different restrictions on the times and types of noises that they're allowed to make on the various days of the week? And then finally, what hours will we enforce? So that's the opening presentation. The rest of the slide deck will be going through each of those issues so we can have a discussion. So any questions about the process I've laid out at the proposed time?
More comment? I mean, I think it's agree with the process. One thing I notice, like, I see Select Board will sign off. I look at this board as just a stakeholder. We can give you an opinion to what we think should be included or not included. Unless we get to things like who will enforce or it's more of an operational thing where I think I have more of a decision to make. I'd hate to think like we're gonna sign off on what it will be as opposed to letting town meeting determine.
I think it's because we're just normally the signer of authority.
Well, I'm just, I just want to be really clear. I see, I see this board as another point of input.
Yes.
Not, not a.
Right.
Well, you know, sign off kind of caught my eye when I saw that. I would remove that from the deck to the general public.
By the time we go to the general public, we will have a proposal where the first part of it is, we say, here is how the noise ordinance will be enforced. And then we have the open issues where we solicit input. And and that's primarily what the citizens will be concerned about.
I just want to make sure the Select Board is seen as a stakeholder and not the ultimate authority.
Right.
Going back to your, the sequence.
So this one?
Right. So, I mean, in a sense, right, I think this was where the sign off. So, I mean, if to some extent, the Select Board would then perhaps decide to send it off to Town Council, right? I mean, that would be.
I think, yeah, we're gonna want to feel good about.
Right. We would want to be familiar enough with it. So, yeah, sign off maybe is it's more of a term, but like.
Yeah, there would be a second draft. It goes out to all of the stakeholders. There may be a third, fourth, fifth, depending on how we want to tweak the language. At some point, we're ready to go to Town Council and the issue is whether we have a final see-through or whether you're comfortable and that goes through. That's not an issue that needs to be decided tonight. We'll be able to see how the process goes and what kind of input we have.
So Select Board review.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we will normally do anything that goes on the town bar and we're gonna review it. So it's not a new, we'll have an opinion.
Yeah, I just think the committee should, we should not hinder the committee from moving forward in any way, shape.
Oh, no.
You're just a, in another.
It's just.
Stakeholders like any other board and committee in town.
It's, it's just my general, I'm not going to talk to Town Council until Jeremy or Jason says I can.
That's awesome.
Yep. So the first issue that the municipality, the municipal stakeholders should decide is who's going to enforce this? Who's going to take the noise complaints? The options are the police or we designate a code for a noise ordinance code enforcement officer who might be working for the Board of Health. There may be an inspectional services or however we reorganize that decision. That also may depend on what day it is and time of day. It might make sense from a pay per hour point of view during business hours, you have someone from the code enforcement officer going out. If it's on the weekend or if it's late at night and someone's having a loud party, makes more sense that you have a police officer doing it. There are costs in having two different groups of enforcement officers in terms of training and making sure that you have instruments that are available to both sets. But this is an issue that the municipal stakeholders would need to work on. One of Chief Kersey's comments when we spoke with him is, he only has a set number of officers on call, working in cruisers during the day. If one of them gets pulled off on a noise complaint, they're not doing traffic, they're not responding to calls about, I heard a noise, things like that. So this ties in with a funding issue. Town, town meeting, if it approves a noise ordinance, is saying that we need to have resources to enforce the noise ordinance. And that is something that we need to be able to tell the community ahead of time how that's going to happen. So any questions about the who question?
I'll say we've had discussions on a staff level and I plan to bring you to the twenty-seven budget discussion about adding hours for an assistant zoning enforcement officer. Because right now our building commissioner is our zoning enforcement officer, so those hours to do building inspections and code enforcement. Are there enough hours to do all those things? So to have someone specific on zoning enforcement, code enforcement, however you want to style it. That, that's an active part of our twenty-seven budget discussions.
Maybe I'm jumping ahead here, but how, how long before you expect to be able to put something in front of town meeting to vote?
My goal is that we, the GBRC feels that we should be able to have this for the twenty twenty-six May town, annual town meeting.
So some of these financial debt issues with the budget process.
That, that's what I'm starting the conversation with here tonight. If it gets approved at town meeting sometime next summer, the Attorney General approves it and it would become effective next September.
The thing about the enforcement strikes me on this is this feels to be more of an immediacy thing. If there's a noise complaint, it's probably happening as opposed to selling or where you can kind of, when I get, I'll get over there, when I get over there. So I think that is to drive out this, where this lives.
That'll be more of the, I assume that'll be more of the local guidelines, you know, policies that are generated here as opposed to what's been put in the law.
And the reality is that, just like Mike said about immediacy, the police will get the call. And it will be expected that they will respond. And the whole idea behind this, when we started it, was to give them some alternatives to arresting people or permanently charging. So the intention from the beginning is always to give the police another tool to enforce this. Because this is, you know, suggesting that we need to have a zoning enforcement officer show up and see if the contract is too loud at, you know, six forty-five in the morning. That's, it's not working.
And we also don't want to convey to the public to say, on Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursday afternoons, call this number, but every other time, call this number. Like, we would want to centralize it and then procedurally, I imagine, and I think Chief Kersey and I could work this out, that we would have an understanding of when, we're not gonna have a forty-hour-a-week assistant zoning enforcement officer just kind of standing around waiting for stuff. So there would be an understanding of what that person's schedule is and, you know, if it's, they would know that kind of mechanism of scheduling.
And the reality is that whenever you're dealing with a noise complaint, having, having somebody in official capacity and uniform and the badge. As a person that has the authority to tell people to cut it out, because that's what this really is, to give them another tool. And it's certainly the point that you need to have the manpower, you know, to be able to respond. But I think suggesting anybody but law enforcement be the ones to enforce a noise complaint. When a citizen calls because they need, because it's an immediate problem, I think is a non-stop.
Would it be unreasonable to then make the scenario driven, Jeremy, from a budget standpoint, to the fan, if it's a hundred percent police enforcement? In Dave's budget, you can lay out for us what that would be in terms of manpower and also what does that lie in terms of his, noise complaints gonna be? So, so he's got somebody available and he's got another opportunity to use it.
Yeah.
Passing, he's already talked about the need of potentially increasing the number of officers down the road. But when I look at this, I'd love to see a police-only, shared enforcement, maybe code enforcement only. You know what I mean? Just to understand what the options are, what the impact might be.
I, I think it's great to put, to put a dollar, dollar figure on it, but I, I think it's important to understand the impetus to start this with the, the police were always the ones who would respond. So they're, they're actually, they're going now when this.
Yeah, so you're saying they're gonna respond.
They're gonna respond anyways. They're already going. The difference is that now they actually have a mechanism to do something about it rather than arresting somebody. And maybe there has been a point where somebody's calling and the dispatcher's telling them, well, you know, we, we'd love to send an officer, but, you know, they, they can't enforce it anyway, so we're not gonna send anybody. That's not happening. So every time there's a noise complaint, the police are getting notified because people are calling dispatch or even nine one one, frankly, if they're frustrated enough. And this is to give the police a tool to respond. Maybe they don't have enough budget to do it.
Right.
But the, the way I kind of see it is the police are the first line responders, code enforcement officer could be almost a follow-up, say like a builder is violating the conditions of their building operating outside their hours. The police could make the observation and go along.
This, this may tie in.
Like, yeah, fine. I mean, I think, I think Chief Kersey should outline.
Yeah.
What might just describe in this is the reality, this is what we can do via increased. I would like, so maybe some call data too that can show how, how many, if they have it, how, how many times that specific complaint is being made, so we can see it.
Brendan makes an excellent point that if there is, if there's an ongoing construction project and it's habitual problem, well, the police show up. But then what happens is the code enforcement and building inspection services gets passed along and they go down later in the day and say, by the way, the cops were here this morning. You started at six thirty. The, the order condition, you're not supposed to start till eight. Here's your, here's your fine. And if you start tomorrow, you're gonna get another fine. And if you do it the next day, you get another fine and after a week you get shut down. And that's, that's the division for what that was always supposed to be.
So, I mean, to me, I'm not looking to solve it necessarily. I just think that Chief Kersey and everybody else to figure out the best. All I'm saying is, let's outline scenarios that when we get asked questions on the floor, we can demonstrate diligence of what the, everything that was looked at and why we think that this is the best process chose.
We'll be exploring this more when we get to the slide about the different types of noises and who's making them.
Dave's just throwing stand up, so you can't see, but I can see it on my screen. Dave, go, go ahead. Do you want to talk?
Yeah, thank you. So I think you guys are working on it as a board pretty good. I agree with pretty much everything Mike and Micah said. So I, I think what it'll come down to is we do have the stats. I can pull the stats of previous noise complaints. I think what we'll have to do is evaluate once the, this bylaw is actually formed, what it, I guess, the particulars of it. If there's gonna be equipment involved, there'll be a cost with that. So I'll have to do an analysis on that and get that to, to Jeremy. If there's gonna be decibel level set and how people know about it, I imagine that will increase our calls because now people know we're gonna have a measuring device to go out there and measure it. So that will kind of go as, as the, if the bylaw passes, you know, we'll have to evaluate that as an ongoing thing. That'd be almost like a, a living document that I'll create on call volume and, and, you know, costs associated with it. So I think I can, I can evaluate it once the actual bylaw is written, then we can kind of come up with, hey, this is where I think that, you know, we're gonna see an increase of calls or an increase of expenses. I think it just all depends on what the committee does for the bylaw. But I agree with Mike and Mike, you know, I think we, we're gonna be the initial responders no matter what. But when it comes to commercial issues, I think we do need to get a code enforcement officer because there's a violation and you have stronger teeth with their permits. You can affect them that way too. If they're, you know, their machines are operating excessively, that's something the board can deal with. But we'll, this is an additional tool that will help us instead of criminally charging people.
The irony.
I think the important point is.
I think the important point is to understand that they need to have the teeth to do something about it because the reality is. It, it's only as good as the penalty. Because if it's a contractor who has a habitual problem and every day they do it, and you tell them to stop. If, you know, they, they evaluate what it's gonna cost them, if it's not dear enough, they're just gonna do it anyway because they don't care. That's why we need to give them the teeth to be able to enforce it and make people comply.
What about issue number two, Carl?
Well, let me just. The iron law of infrastructure, if you build it, they will come. Whether it's a new road, a new law, people will start using it once they know it's available. So number two, equipment, as Chief Kersey was just saying, what kind of equipment is needed? In order to be, you cannot use a noise app on your phone, that's not good enough for the courts. The industry standard is ANSI S one dot four, the nineteen eighty three version. I went and looked at uh, recommendations at other towns, did a search for municipal noise ordinance monitoring. And I came up with a bunch of different websites uh, that all sell this kind of thing, prices range between five hundred and fifteen hundred dollars for. The ones municipalities use. Labs use like the twenty five hundred to ten thousand dollar ones, but the handheld ones are, are in that price range. And again, this is something that the municipality should work with. This is, would be a capital expense, not part of the police budget, uh, because it would be a one-time purchase for a number of years.
How many are typically needed, like?
I would leave that to the people who are going to be using it. I don't know whether Chief Kersey would want. Two, so he can always have a backup. Does the, if the code enforcement officer is going to be doing a monitoring, does he need one as well? That's something for the municipal stakeholders to discuss in the next couple of months.
When you were looking at other bylaws, um, are there any requirements for these devices to be periodically calibrated?
A month, a number of them either in the bylaws or in the regulations say that it should be calibrated the day of because of atmospheric humidity, temperature kind of settings. So.
So they also have a calibration source?
Yes. Uh, one of the, one of the items that we'll get to is, is in addition to buying the equipment, you need to do training. The more people who are going to do the enforcement, the more training budget that you need uh, in, in order to do that. So that's, that's not just saying someone is going to be going out and buying equipment, you need to make sure that they know how to use it, how to calibrate it, how to monitor it, how to. Clean it, someone's responsible for upgrading the firmware, software, stuff like that. So enforcement issue number three, we talked about fines. What are the fines going to be for a violation for first, second, third offense? Most places start small, hundred dollars or fifty dollars per first defense. If you have to go back the second time in the same day or the same project. It doubles and then after that it jumps up by an order of magnitude. Third offense, you're a thousand dollars because you didn't take care of it the first two times. You mentioned that we may pull their building permit or in other ways, otherwise issued in the stop work order. That's something that the code enforcement staff stakeholders would be able to speak about because they would be able to fit that into. Their usual process for telling people who are polluting or otherwise uh, violating the terms of their order of conditions. So again, the goal is that we have this set before we go to the first public meeting and solicit citizen input.
Probably coordinate that fine process with the building. Fines, right? Like that should all be unified or does it matter?
Well, we inspectional services.
Inspection services, yeah. I, I mean, you wouldn't want to be drastically out of line, I imagine.
One of the questions is, did the fines help pay the salary of the person who's doing the enforcement?
Yeah, the short answer is no.
In the same way that the building inspector is not paid by, you know. The permit fees or the health inspector the same way, it's, it ends up going, going into the pot in the middle and everything. So the question becomes, is this something we want to do as a community? Because government's the only people who are gonna do this, not do we have something that is gonna fund this dollar for dollar and is it a break even enterprise for us? So the, the fines are to modify the behavior, we think we should be modifying behavior regardless of what, regardless of how it's funded. There's a general interest to have even taxpayer dollars.
Well, be prepared to say that at the public meeting. Open issue four is appeals. What's the appeal process and who's going to heal the, here are the appeals. For traffic fines, it's the town clerk. For inspectional services appeals, is that the Board of Health or is there another inspectional service department? That's something I don't know about firsthand, but that's something the municipal stakeholders would want to work out and tell the G B R C how to write it up. I've seen it done both ways in, in, in other. Other, other bylaws.
What are the grounds allowed for appeals? Just curious.
The ground for an appeal is someone says, I don't like you gave me a ticket, I wanna go talk to the, I, I wanna talk to your supervisor.
I mean, we could put a bar on it, but.
Well, I don't know if I necessarily advocate, I'm just curious as to what.
Just having an avenue for people to be heard.
So in the parking realm, you don't really need, there's no bar, just say, I'm going to appeal this and then you state what you're appealing. And I believe Ellen's the municipal hearing officer.
Yes.
For that, so I, Ellen, town clerk, so I would advocate for her to continue to do municipal hearing and have, have the appeals process there. But you don't, you can appeal it for whatever, whatever reason you want. You can say I didn't know and then we.
The, the next issue which ties in with stuff that we are going to solicit public input from is what is excluded from the bylaw? Every single bylaw I've ever reviewed says emergency support is excluded, fire truck, ambulance. Tornado siren, uh, anything involved, you know, if, if. Providence Street culvert collapsed again, working around the clock, making a whole lot of noise to fix it on an emergency basis, not covered by the noise ordinance, you just tell people sorry. Likewise, no removal, other municipal maintenance and repair work if they're out on Misco Road filling in by potholes. Nope, no, noise ordinance doesn't apply, that's, that's uh, covered and that gets written into the actual bylaw. The final thing that's kind of interesting is an activity granted a permit by a town agency. Usually the select board, but maybe another one, for example. The parade is gonna have fire trucks, they wanna have fireworks. The Mendon Drive-In wants to have a concert where they do karaoke and it's blasting away. You know, after seven P M because they're, but they're doing this as a scheduled permitted event that they went and got an entertainment license from or whatever they. They were given permission by someone to make a whole lot of noise. And the expectation is that if people want to be living in a rural community, they would come. To the board that's about to grant the permit and say, I'm in a butter and I don't wanna hear that noise. Maybe they reach an accommodation with the person who's running the event to say, here, have some free tickets or, or whatever works. Okay, so, so I'm coming up with bad ideas.
It's not going in the bylaw.
Okay, but, but what goes in the bylaw is that if an activity has been granted a permit by a town agency, then it is permitted and not subject to an enforcement action. So.
Well, I mean, I think we actually kind of had something in front of this board that could fall into this. Area, but if you talk about entertainment, we can still grant an activity subject to.
Yeah.
The.
Yeah, we could cap it, or we could cap it, I mean, above, we could say that we know this is gonna be ten decibels above or whatever.
I, I just think that, to me, it's like, I think it's back to just the, the bones of the bylaw, it's like, what are the levels? I have no idea what levels are loud or not, so I think getting that, you know, calibrating that range, it's gonna be so important to give a baseline so that. I think if, if there is an outdoor activity, one would expect that will follow the, the noise ordinance by law, you know what I mean? So we gotta make sure that calibration's kind of reasonable from the get-go.
Yeah, I, I think on the event, you know, I don't know that we have this sort of specificity right now, but if you're granting permission for, you know. Scavenger hunt to use town property, you're not going to exempt them from the noise by law. But like Carl had said, the parade, you know, or fireworks at the end rock the block, like I think Brendan just said. Perhaps the board wants to exempt them, so it would be a, you know.
You know, I, I, yes. You would say we would exempt it at the point of granting versus.
You'd be allowed to, not mandated to.
Yep, at which point if the police get a call, they say, yeah, it's the fireworks, we know about it and they've been given a one-time exemption.
So it's like, well, it could fall anyways. Yeah.
So uh, other exemptions that some communities have, some communities don't, that we would finalize after citizen input is. Farm animals and farm machinery. Mendon is a right to farm town, so there will probably be a big argument with people saying. No, roosters are a nuisance, roosters are a nuisance, or the neighbor's cows are making a lot of noise, the cowbells are clanking away. And that is something that I expect there will be spirited discussion at a, at a public meeting. But that's not something that the municipal, municipality should decide for the citizens. Next one, uh, almost all of the towns have an exemption for school bells, church chimes. So they're saying that, yes, the recess bell, maybe it's loud, but it has to be to cut through the noise of the kids, so that is going to be allowed. Uh, and similarly, uh, car alarms or house alarms, they're saying. Your car alarm or house alarm is allowed to make a lot of noise, but only for the first twenty minutes. After twenty minutes, it should get shut off because somebody should have been responding to it. Again, some municipalities have that, some don't. But that's an example of the kind of thing that we would get citizen input from. And when we have a public meeting, there may be lots of other ideas that people come up with for things that they would like to have either included or excluded.
This, this one feels like it's gonna be like the historic district bylaw process where it needs to have some guidance and teeth. So it's like, you have to, we're not gonna tell you what color to paint your house, but there's certain things we expect you to buy, buy, buy in this district. Same idea here, it's gotta be reasonable. So like when I see. School church bells and chimes, I think I'm surprised, I realize we probably have to say this, cite it, but most people are expecting to hear it anyway, that we've never even called for. You know what I mean?
Well, I, I think it's great just because it anticipates everything, you know, just, just having, having been there, done that. And trying to. Typically not reasonable, because that's the situation normally, I mean, ninety nine percent of the time. You won't have any, any noise problems, people understand, they live in a rural community, you know, in a, in a community. But when you do have an issue, you're going to speak to somebody. And it's great to have all this anticipated because then that kind of takes all of your objections away.
Yes, especially if they got woken up at four in the morning.
Hopefully four in the morning. But your points won't take.
Yeah, so uh, the, the other. Issue uh, that we would get public input from is where do you measure the noise? And there are two major differences. The first one is you go to the house where someone is making the complaint. And you go to their front door, their window, you go two feet to six feet above, hold the meter and measure the noise there. And that way you see the impact of the noise on the person who's making the complaint. The other way of measuring noise is you walk up to the property line and hold the meter right at the property line. It is our strong recommendation that we do it at the threshold of the complaint because otherwise you have a police officer going out in the woods in the middle of the night trying to find the property line. And with our rural zoning, it doesn't make sense to measure at the property line. For certain kinds of commercial noises, uh, subject to a, a building permit. One of the other ways of measuring noise is at the public way, that's the street, the road, right next to where. The noise on the, the construction noise is coming from. Uh, so that, I'm just putting that up there as a third option that is written into some bylaws. And then the other major issue that we would get citizen input from is how do you measure it? And again, there's a split, two ways of doing it. The first one is you measure an absolute decibel level. There is a technical difference between D B and D B A. D B A is what an instrument hears, D B A is what a human being hears. And so, for example, ten feet away from a dead engine, jet engine is like a hundred decibels. A rock concert front row, ninety decibels. So that's the kind of level, it's sort of sliding scale. People are gonna have to get. Used to where that is. But the goal of having a numerical value is it's very simple to enforce. You hold the meter up and if it's in the red zone, you write a ticket. If not, you tell this person, I'm sorry, but it doesn't rise to the level of violating the, the, the noise ordinance. The second way of doing uh, these. Other, mo- most cities have an absolute decibel level, Boston, Worcester. Right, more rural and residential communities have this concept of above ambient. You check the meter while the noise is going on, you wait for the noise to stop and see if it's above ambient level. This is slightly more subjective, but it may be more suited for Mendon as a rural community. Again, this is where we get community input from. And we'd have to do education ahead of the discussion to go into what these different values are. There is another issue here with the type of noise, there's something that's defined as a tonal noise, a whine, a hum, a buzz that persists, like. A tonal noise is considered a violation at a lower decibel level, so for example. If you have a threshold of sixty decibels, fifty five decibel tonal noise is considered it because they're so damn annoying. And it's because again, how humans process uh, that kind of noise. The next issue to be discussed with the public is, do we consider who makes the noise? Do we have the same rule for every noise, no matter who's making it, or do we differentiate? Do we say if a homeowner or renter is making noise on their own property? Are they allowed to make noises differently than a contractor coming in with a leaf blower or a contractor hammering and sawing? Or do we treat that differently from a contractor on a site with a building permit or a demolition permit? And I'll go immediately onto the next slide because now we say, what hours are we going to restrict? This is going to be subject to great debate. Some towns have the same rules for all the time, Boston does that probably because they're a big city. Others say we have one set of rules for Monday through Friday, we have another set of rules for Saturday. And we have a third set of rules for Saturdays and holidays, and for each of those days we customize and it looks like this. You end up having a very complicated spreadsheet that says who's allowed to make a noise and at what time. So for example, a resident working at their own house to make noises until nine P M on Friday. All day Saturday and all day Sunday. But a contractor has to stop making noise at five P M on Friday and Saturday, and they're not allowed to make any noise on the site. On Sundays and holidays. Again, this is. These categories and times are for demonstration purposes only, we're not recommending anything, but this is the kind of granularity that some communities decide they want to do. And that's what we would be getting citizen input on. If you have strong feelings one way or the other, you can let us know, we'd say the select board recommends or municipal staff recommends. But then that would be, we make quite clear, this is only our recommendation and we want to get citizen input on it. The goal being that we talk this out in the public meetings and not have a floor debate with amendments at town meeting. So that's the conclusion of the presentation and now any final questions?
On the previous topic, I think simpler is better. I, I think it would be very difficult to explain that chart.
Right. Refrigerator before they made a call.
Right, it's like the, uh, it's like the trash can, right?
Right.
And just, this is just to prove the thought. Having everything based only on a decibel meter is problematic. Because what, you know, when the, when the police off, when, when the homeowner calls to complain. And when the police show up to enforce. Many times it's a very different situation. So in other words, just because they're not making noise, they show up, doesn't mean they won't stop later, and if it has to be based on. What the meter says, well, if they're not making the noise.
But it can't be based on hearsay either. How do you, how do you compromise?
And, and it has to be, there are ways to write it and to give the police the enforcement. I'm just saying, it's, it certainly is, there are, there are CMRs for for the registry of motor vehicles when it comes to, for instance, motorcycle.
Right.
It's very, very, um, defined as, you know, a certain decibel level at a certain distance over a certain time, it's very defined. But, um, one of the chapter nines, harsh and objectionable noise, it's based on the opinion of the, of the, uh, person observing, the officer observing. So my point is, you know, this is, there's a reason why this has never been really dealt with before, you did a great job breaking. It's, it's complicated, but all I'm saying is, there has to be, some of that has to come into play here. And the best ones, best people to do it are the cops who are actually going there to have to enforce it. And, and I guarantee you that Dave Kersey was exactly what I'm talking about. When I say that, it's nothing more frustrating than having to be dispatched someplace to go deal with a problem. When you get there, and then you leave, and then an hour later or twenty minutes later, you get another phone. And they start making noise again, and then twenty minutes later, you get another phone call. I'm not, I'm not offering the solution, I'm just saying.
It could be like, yeah, like a thresh, like, you know, we came out once, we measured it, it was too low. We came out three times and now objectively, we need to do something about it, I mean.
Yeah, or you have to give them
Some sort of.
Have to be, and, and the chief will have a, have a good idea.
One of the things I will point out is that in addition to a municipal bylaw that was passed at town meeting, many communities have regulations. Mass Board of Health website has a model of regulation for noise regulations. Regulations would be approved by municipal boards. Um, Sudbury has their policy online, which goes very specifically, and that's where they say you shall calibrate and you shall measure this way, and that's where I got the numbers, two feet to six feet. And, uh, there is a sound meter, sound level meter specification, that's the NC standard that was referred to. And then the last one is, it's not on there anymore, but if you go to the way, the internet archive, Wayback Machine, you can find their nineteen ninety policy that says no excessive noise between, uh, seven PM and seven AM. Uh, so these links are available in the presentation, uh, I expect that.
It went in the packet, and I just sent the, to the board, so you could have it separately.
So the next question will be to you to identify municipal staff members and committees. We, we, we've already been working with Chief Kersey, we would, the GBRC would ask that you identify other people that the GBRC can work with to nail down a bunch of these issues.
Is it, what's the state of the agricultural community?
Uh, I talked to one of the members, he said, summer is a busy time for agricultural people to start off their first meeting, so I asked if we can kind of reconvene in a couple of weeks to, to do the kickoff.
To, to that point, I think the whole idea of the rooster ban several years ago generated a lot of discussion and it was overwhelming. So I think there's gonna be a lot of support for that.
I agree.
The, the way that that is phrased is domesticated animal noises. And domesticated meaning anything on a farm, anything that you have in your house.
Like barking.
Honestly, I agree too.
Well, dogs are different because we have a specific animal control ordinance which defines a nuisance animal. One of the ways a dog can be a nuisance is if it barks too long, too, too too many days in a row for too many hours.
Can't you just say farm animals? I, I just believe it as animals personally, domesticated animals.
That's, I, that might be a legal thing.
This is where I go find other municipalities that have bylaws and steel.
The other thing I say that is, is there, there are separate ordinances for, for, for dogs.
Yeah.
Yes.
There are already, so if you just throw farm animals, well now it's any animals on a farm, including dogs. Yeah, yeah, well, Southwicks kind of off the zoo now, but I think it's still.
My neighbor has six roosters, or, or six chickens and a rooster. Are they a farm? No, are they farm animals? Ooh, if they're not a farm, can they be a farm animal? So I don't want to get into that.
Yes, they can.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So those, those conversations will come out.
Well, right, right, the farm bylaws.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, you have chickens.
I think everybody agrees on the intent, it's just really how it's directed.
May, maybe that, I don't know, maybe that's even the default position because the town meeting was pretty clear, the.
I mean, it can be written if that's, that's, it can be written directly into the bylaw, yeah, I mean, that intent can be written directly in. That's definitely possible, you make sure that.
My, my goal is municipal staff and boards write the first half, we have a public meeting. Public meeting will come back probably with half people saying this, half people saying that. We will craft one position and not the other, and we will have a disc, another discussion at town meeting. And someone at town meeting may have a floor amendment to say, we want to regulate different, we want to change the language, and that will go up or down. Whichever wins, we, we are able to enforce, we, we have met our goal of passing a noise bylaw.
Can your discussions, have you, I mean, it's interesting, we're saying, well, you know, farm animals shouldn't be included, or things like that. Have you talked about the things you're actually targeting? I mean, in my mind, there's probably certain things on top, I don't know, I can think of, are subject to noise. You start there on what people definitely agree to, say absolutely, versus the minutia where you know there's gonna be. We're talking about.
Let me put on my other hat, uh, conservation commission, going on sidewalks, twenty-three Cape Road, people are talking about that. But the response is, the planning board set up very specific rules for when they could make noises and they are within that because they are a very large company and they're not going to break the law. The other one is the pile driving on, uh, Uxbridge Road, for months and months last year, which drove people nuts. So the kind of noises that we were typically getting complaints about on my sidewalks was commercial permitted noise, as opposed to the noise complaints that the, the police are getting. Hey, the party next door is too loud, can you shut them down? I'm trying to sleep.
I think laying out potentially broad-based intent of what we're really targeting, and I, to your point, I think planning board, I'm assuming you've talked to the planning board, the zoning board, appeals, like those folks. Cause I think the, the building and the construction businesses are probably a source. And if you start to put this noise, noise ordinance in, they're gonna need to be able to understand what it is when they're. So I'm assuming they're already involved, if not municipal stakeholders, they shouldn't be involved, right?
Right, um, I, I've talked with, with people in the town, but one of the questions is, when we this is why you would have three levels of who's making the noise. Commercial contractors in general will follow whatever rule we give them, no matter how silly it is, and they'll just charge the person they're doing the work for the extra cost. If they're told they can't work on Sundays, fine, your project's going to be late. So I don't expect the large commercial projects, I've always talked to, they're very responsive and they'll just say, great, we'll factor it into our costs. It would be the, the other kind of contractors who were coming in and doing the leaf blowing yard work, someone a friend of a friend who's coming in and, and, uh, building an addition, uh, things like that.
I, I just want to make a point of clarity for folks who live near the twenty-three Cape Road project. Uh, the contractor did willfully violate the order of conditions from the planning board on the time they were allowed to work because they had to pour a slab and they could only get it done if they worked kind of all day outside of those hours. And when we visited the site and said, you can't do that, they said, I know, and we won't do it again, but that's the only way you can do it. Um, so without these kind of teeth, right, without defined fines in the bylaw, there wasn't much for us to be able to do besides say, yes, please don't do it again, our work is gonna shut you down entirely. Um, so, you know, if we had even a little bit of teeth to say, we'll at least fine you for your willful violation, I think that would be really helpful.
Uh, the other thing is, we may want to have something in the regulations. They could come before the code enforcement officer and that municipal board and say, I need a one-day permit that will allow me to start work at four in the morning. And then that gets approved, it gets, the butterers get told, sorry, put in earplugs, but we gotta get this done. And because of the hardship, the town has agreed to let them do it.
Yeah, it would be nice if we had an atmosphere where companies could do that. You know, they felt like they could trust us and they would come tell us as opposed to just doing it and accepting us being upset after.
Permission instead of forgiveness, what a concept.
I think it's, the biggest problem right now is, is actually the other one. Where the residents didn't have. And I think what this is trying to do is to give the, the police the opportunity to str- strengthen balance. Cause out of balance, the other way.
All right, um.
Oh, just, I appreciate all of this research, it's very impressive and it was very clear presentation, so thank you for bringing it all together like that. And I just, to follow up, in your research with the other towns, I know, like, some little sub-questions that came up, I'm like, ooh, I wonder what town does what, so I'm sure you have that all, right, so for, for some of the points that you mentioned, so I'm, I'm curious if you've spoken to anyone from any of these towns about like, how's it going, what would you have done differently?
Falmouth had a big bruhaha over pickleball. Apparently pickleball goes pling, which is very annoying at ten o'clock at night. So they are specifically in their proposed bylaw, they have a carve-out for pickleball noises and things like that, so.
Okay, so maybe parks, uh, like parks would be good to include as well.
But, but the, the whole point is, I'm very worried of going and talking to municipal staff holders who get paid about things like this without a broad directive from on high saying, yes, this is something the town is now going to seriously work on, please spend a little bit of your, your, some time during the week. Uh, and, and especially, uh, working with, uh, the police chief on budgeting for the capital expense, uh, whether that goes to the CPC or whatnot, training budget, things like that. So, so that if we are able to get this done effective next September, that we don't have to go around and say, whoops, we didn't buy the equipment, we are able to go to town meeting and say we have already lined up the purchasing and the training so that if this gets approved, then we can make it effective as of a particular date next fall.
I think it's a worthwhile effort for the town to focus on this year.
And, and just to the point on, uh, your point on engaging municipal, municipal employees, I defer to Jeremy in terms of engaging, you know, if there's a committee needs to engage municipal paid employees, I'm deferring to Jeremy to say this is, this is the time they can give or have and then coordinate all that.
And, and nine times out of ten, say, yeah, great, because they're the folks who are going to live this every day, so to exempt them, um, just to say, we don't want to burden you with, with a meeting, no, they would, they want to be.
Yep, so I will be meeting up with you to talk about all of my different hats.
All right, uh, are there any other comments? Wow, thank you for your detailed explanation as always. Alrighty, um, and, uh, well, we'll talk about that at the end. Okay, so, uh, number eight, uh, approval of donations for Rock the Block. Jeremy, uh, is going to read off the list of donations and the amounts, and then afterwards, I would ask for a motion to approve those.
Um, so, uh, this will be a little easier in that there are seven donations and they're all for nine hundred dollars. So I'm just gonna read the donors themselves, they're all for nine hundred dollars each. Um, and this is, this is since the board's last approval, so the donations totaled twenty-four thousand, one hundred dollars for Rock the Block. Uh, the, uh, seven donating entities are Tinio Corporation, Harshaw Paving, AS Jones, JJ Mechanical, Tinio Consulting, and Green Site Services Group. And I want to say this is in addition to various, um, so that would be the motion, but the, the previous ones, just so we can say folks' names out out loud and recognize them in varying amounts, um, previous donors were Friends of Mendon Elders, Superior Chrysler Dodge, Naomi Vought, Century Twenty-One, Kimball Sand, Alan Engineering, Devaney Energy, Daniel Antonelli's from Pos, Bet and Biscuit, and Bocher Energy, um, were the previous donors. That made this event possible.
Um, so I'll be looking for a motion to approve the donations for Rock the Block as read.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Uh, yeah, I was, uh, I was away for a personal issue, but I heard, uh, the fireworks were great and there was a little bit of weather, but
Just a little bit.
A little bit of weather. Um, all right, uh, all those in favor? All those against? Motion passes, thank you so much for your donations for that community event. All right, uh, number nine is a temporary trailer permit um, on Gaskell Street, uh, for the residents who had a fire on the back of their home. I mean, they're still rebuilding.
Um, so the, the permit that the board issues is good for six months, they can come back and renew it for six months, so this is somewhat procedural, um, for the folks to be able to renew and finish their build.
So go ahead, for motion?
I move to approve the renewal of temporary trailer permit located at eighteen Gaskell Street for another six months.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? All right, motion passes. All right, uh, number ten, which is a one-day liquor license for the Black Harp LLC.
I'm here, from the Black Harp.
Oh, hello, Jean?
Hi, yes.
Uh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I just wanted you to know that I, I did make it, I wasn't able to come in person tonight, but I wanted you to know that I dialed in, I wasn't sure if you could see that.
Um, yep, well, we can see now that it's you, um, and so do we have all of the, um, all the paperwork completed and submitted?
And the board might, may remember, this is the same entity that did, um, uh, one-day liquor permit at Perrin for their event there. At the Garrison Speed Shop on Uxbridge Road.
Um, so are there any questions? I think it's pretty, pretty basic, the event, uh, is gonna run from twelve, three, and, um, they're gonna have that portable bar there and, um, portable bar, yeah. Yeah, I think it's neat. Um, so I'd just be looking for a motion to approve that one-day liquor license.
I move to approve the one-day liquor license for the Black Harp LLC for an event on October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five at the Garrison Speed Shop located at forty-five Uxbridge Road in Mendon from twelve PM to three PM.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? So the, uh, right, so just, uh, the event, one more time, will be October twenty-fifth from twelve, three PM. Uh, seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Uh, good luck, uh, with your event, Jean, we, uh, appreciate you putting efforts into the town.
Thank you so much, guys, have a great night. Bye-bye.
Right, so, um, so, uh, number eleven was already concluded earlier, uh, number twelve is committee assessment revitalization. So, um, we had talked about the liaison assignments previously. Some were, uh, sort of left up in the air, and so we'd like to just come back and finalize that list. Remember that liaising doesn't have any, uh, policy or guidelines behind it. Uh, at its very core, what it means is that you're a point of contact. Um, at its maximus, it means you're attending every meeting and contributing all the time, right? So I think for most of us, it's somewhere in between. So I just wanted to say that upfront, there are no expectations here, other than if somebody needs some assistance, they reach out to you first to figure out what the next steps are. Um, so that being said, um, it's gonna take a minute to get to that spreadsheet. Jeremy is scrolling faster than me. There it is, oh, yes, oh, it's cut off.
Yeah.
It's cut off on mine, I don't know if it's cut off on this.
What age are you?
Uh, seventy-one.
It's only on the bottom, it's cut off, all right, so, um, all right, so, uh, right now, what I, I'm not gonna go through every single one. Um, uh, there are a couple that have been performed by the same individual for over and over and over again. And, um, you know, if that, if you're tired and you'd like to see new light there, now's the time to sort of speak up. Um, so is there anybody, is there anything missing? I guess that's the first thing we should. So is there anybody, is there anything missing? I guess that's the first thing we should do.
Economic Development Committee.
So I see Goddard, but yeah, 24, but not listed for the rest.
Still there. It doesn't meet much, but I think it's an important one to kind of flesh out.
So everything looks like it's
Now just throughout the school, if anybody's interested in the budgets, all, you know, the budget subcommittee meetings, those are fascinating. Any takers?
I hear a lot of people are invigorated.
You know what? Keeping in mind that that it's just to reiterate, the chairman said, you know, if if um, if the expectation is that you're there every time, but you know, you're the point of point takers, somebody has a question, um, I'm certainly willing to to do that, to be there.
Well, we can put you in as a secondary.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying. If Mike wants a little relief, certainly put me on there. I'll stick with it because I think it's important, at least on the the subcommittee side, that actually they get attendance. Because those are really working meetings and I think it it helps us. I'm sure Jeremy will be able to drop in on some of those as well.
They would appreciate that. Yeah, I know. I know sometimes like FinCom members have attended from.
FinCom, yeah. And and actually we had a couple last year, but I think they they request.
Right.
They get representation, so um, I got the meeting invites already, so I just have them on my calendar. So I'll stick with them as a primary, but I can't make one like, you know, maybe secondary.
We can add Mike as secondary and I'll send it out to the schools, just saying that, should you need something in years or two.
Right, as far as the valid tax one, I had that understanding with the with the superintendent. There is the Mr. Steel, the superintendent now. So I really should reach out to him. Just kind of establish or reestablish that contact.
So I also have been a liaison for this school committee, so I'm not listed here. So I was, so I
Yeah, I think we just don't, we don't have the secondaries for 2026.
Yeah, so I mean, I
You are listed, but it's on that breakaway sheet on page 71. Yeah.
It's a secondary.
Yeah. Yeah, it's hard to line it up that you're on.
But as as I mean, I'm happy to be primary again. I know I didn't want to be uh, primary when I was chair. But I've been, you know, I tried to go to um, the regular school committee meetings.
Yeah, we can kind of split that. I did the subcommittees. You did the main meetings.
Yeah. And either way, I'm okay. I'm glad I'm still on there.
Right.
That's funny. On my my screen, I can't actually see what line it is.
No, I just can't. PDF is not the best when it's camp format.
So you want to, you want to just make keep that? I'll do subcommittee, you do the main.
I mean, I think that that worked and I know like uh, before I also was available to go to at least a couple of the subcommittee meetings. But maybe, I guess depending on when they are, like, I mean, it's all, it's all going to be depending on the schedule.
I mean, maybe there's an issue of voting for some.
It's it's really more about getting better at um, being like, I know that we're about, but like notifying these boards that we're available and that we we can come and visit. Or that we can answer questions. Uh, now that I've been very clear with boards about that, like I get very directed questions and they come early, um, which is much more helpful than when there's a problem. Um, you know, the the GBRC is a great example, like, you know, I I stop in, I review what's going on, I re-steer it. I think the board would like them to be re-steered, but then at the end of the day, it's really like, okay, I think it's time for you to come talk with us, right? And so that can't really be done unless you're communicating, even if it's just email. So I think it's really more about us saying like, we're transparent, we're available, this is the list. Um, if you're meeting and you want us there, um, and you don't know if we're going to be there, just just reach out, you know? So I think that's the main thing. And I guess I don't know if this ever happened before, but if it didn't, if now we could email all those, you know, and just say, hey, here's the list. You can look at the Excel spreadsheet on SharePoint or whatever.
Yeah, we'll we'll.
All right, uh, there's no vote, uh, other than one. That's you. Zoom back to the top, um. All right, so uh, number 13, the TA has something to say about special town meeting.
Yeah, so uh, closed the war on October 2nd, so we've got a number of placeholders. So I just wanted to kind of buzz through these. Um, there are some but I will say we're going to reorganize this in a way that makes sense for consent agenda and for some capital stuff, uh, which I want to go through. So we'll have some bills of the prior year. Uh, we have a lot of, right now about $8,000 worth of national grid bills from all the way back to like fiscal '23. Um, we uh, uh, there was a meter here that just wasn't connected to anything and they finally got some data and started billing us. So it says billing period, you know, like December to 2022, bill August 2025.
But they said they weren't going to bill us.
So they, so not not the entirety of it, but they have some parts where they do have data for it. So for most of fiscal '25, we don't have bills for it, but they have older stuff where they did have data and it just didn't get to get to us.
Can I just make the recommendation that we check with town council or something to find out if there's some loophole or caveat where they didn't send it to us in a timely manner?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
You know?
You'd be able to argue there's an error.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know where they get that data from, but it's curious if they have loading data that they weren't able to bill us on until we told them they weren't billing.
Yeah. Um, so that's that's the big one. So certainly worthy of follow up. Um, there are some smaller other ones that we're kind of always going to have. Um, and then three right in a row, stabilization account, capital expenditures account, OPEB trust fund. Um, so as we get free cash certified and we, you know, put that into a larger picture, uh, we'll be able to have dollar amounts in those. Um, fire department vehicle leases. Um, the fire department has two years left on a lease that the fire chief did not realize at the time of like the presentation and needs additional monies to be able to pay for it. Um, so that will be built into the '27 budget and it should be part of our general operations.
Not to get bogged down, but how did, how did nobody know it was two more years left?
There was anecdotal or conversations that said the lease was up and so we had talked about the lease in the budget and he said, no, please stop, I don't need it. And then we got a bill for it and went and found the contract documentation that says now it's this year and next year still for the lease.
Long term, we just need to coordinate the paying of the lease with the holding of the contract and I think that was disconnected.
This, this is the, is this the rescue?
Uh, this is the pumper, the 2020 pumper truck.
I just know that there's been, there were a couple of the whole process was disconnected.
Yeah.
Yes, so the previous rescue has been paid off and we are, we've currently taken ownership and delivery of the the new one.
Where where's the contract held? I mean, I would, I would surprise you to eat found, I would assume maybe it's what you're referring to, but I would assume all of these con, these contracts are centralized, held within the finance team.
Nope. So they they, they have been now because we need to disclose our long term lease as part of our financial disclosures. So that's kind of how this was found. Said, all right, everybody get their, get their leases into for for annual financial report and then treasurer, collector who puts these together says, I, you know, I don't have an update on this one. We're like, didn't know that one existed. So it was, it was, yeah.
But we're going to take action to kind of break that, bring all this stuff together.
Yeah, so that and grants are the two things that we have to have that are right to keeping on, um, our long term obligations. So bonds, bond's pretty easy in that that, yeah, we got 30 year lead time to do these things and we, it's not that many of them, uh, but the but the leases and grants and especially grants with the volume of smaller stuff. Um, yeah, it's going to be a priority of mine for '26. Um, placeholder in ABCC adopting 138 section 12D. That's what we talked about here where it gives people, uh, gift license holders of uh, beer and um, wine onsite consumption, the option, but not the obligation to convert that to an all liquor license. So it's
For the duration of their license or it's on sale.
So.
Number five.
Number five. Oh, I'm looking at, I've sent some updated online.
All right, yeah, this number.
Number five has been struck and is not on there. Um, so yeah, all right.
I did, but.
Wondering, I'm like, oh.
So after, after I got this this afternoon, I um, or after I got this KDAX, I started a few things, including Article 7, so non criminal ticket, uh, MGL 4021D, which is something I've talked about here before, and in chapter one, section three of our general bylaws, it says consistent with chapter 4021D. So both the building commissioner and I had looked at the back of the bylaws where it says accepted MGLs and we're like, oh, we didn't accept this MGL. But we have a bylaw that allows select board to um, brush up some.
Apparently we stuck it in there.
Yeah, right, right at page four. Missed it. Um, so this, this does allow for the non criminal disposition.
We have a, we have a tool at our disposal now that we haven't often used.
So the select board may from time to time designate enforcement officers um, and at fines that are set regularly, I forget the words, but you get to set a fine schedule and pick people to to.
But not like, I think the way it's written is we can't, we can't change it like every week, every month. Like, you know, it's one of those things, like you have to be cognizant and, you know, selective.
Um, so some of the other placeholders that we have on here, um, dollar wise, Board of Health, um, so I've talked about this. I don't know if I've talked about it in a meeting, but I've talked about it with individuals. Um, we applied for um, a reduced testing schedule at the Old Men and Landfill, uh, based upon our compliance. And then um, when DEP came in, they said, actually, your wells are in the wrong place. Um, and you need to put in three new wells because three of your wells aren't actually monitoring, they should be monitoring. So we have a proposal um, to um, test where we should test, put them wells in where we should. And uh, you know, if we hadn't asked for this reduced um, compliance, you know, DEP wouldn't have known. We kind of can't unring that bell now that they do know, but the payback here is pretty quick. Um, it's actually 19,000 and something. Um, I put a 10% contingency on here because we're dealing with engineering and old asphalt. Um, and then the payback here is like, I think, three years in that our annual testing budget will be, you know, five to $6,000, whatever it is, less.
Yeah, it would have come up at any point in time in the future, what we asked about it.
It's what should have been done. Um, the assessors office is asking for um, GIS software. Um, so I'm not going to put the vendor name in the in the article, um, but a GIS software, we have a proposal. Um, this could be used um, all through inspectional services. It's something that conservation and planning are also excited about. I will say the the vendor where they that they have the proposal from, uh, we used an Attleboro and we used them in Attleboro because a city council member is the principal assessor in Totten and really advocated for it and it's yeah, it's been a really, it's, it's been a really great tool.
Does it supplant any other GIS software we're using like?
That what we have on the website. Now, this is like more real time data. They do low level flyovers like two to three times a year. So you get Brendan didn't tell the board he was putting pool in or whatever and then we can.
I don't have any. Birds chickens. The chicken pool.
Um, flood hazard overlay district, uh, town planner has been going back and forth with town council a lot on this. This is something that we um, accepted or that we approved at annual town meeting. It was accepted by the AG, but there are parts of it that do report with MEMA standards in ways that we, like I said earlier, wish we would have been
Formed on.
Ahead of time. Um, so now we are comporting with those standards so everyone can participate in the NFP, National Flood and Trif Program. Um, table 301, um, table A use regulations, um, believe that's some housekeeping stuff. Um, I'm not sure the specifics of that. I'll get it from planning. Planning will be here in a couple weeks. Um, same with open space, site plan review. These are all planning articles where we'll all have write ups from all of them, um, well in advance of of town meeting. Um, this end may end up, we have um, a question to town council. This may end up being two separate articles. Um, but as folks are aware, our prohibition on um, our, on content on signs is um, illegal according to the US Supreme Court. We have just not yet changed the local bylaw. Um, so this is the sort of thing where I have given and council have given instruction to the building commissioner to use professional judgment and not enforce um, a zoning, a sign zoning bylaw, which we has been struck down by the US Supreme Court, just hasn't been challenged locally. Um, um, and so we want to make the change on our own. So the building commissioner and all aggressively do that. He can just follow us in the bylaw. Um, ADUs, uh, this is the one where we had a 17 page decision from the attorney general's office. Um, the numbering might be wrong as well, um, just where it sits in the in the um, zoning bylaws. So we can amend that and amend um, the attorney general's comments as well.
As a question, the fact that we did not pass this, does that mean that what's in place right now on the state level is what everybody has to conform to?
Yeah, so this is, this, though, like, three levers that we got to pull um, are not currently in place right now.
Well, basically what the state, which is downsizing and which is more liberal than what we actually said, is what exists right now. I thought the decision said that the rest of it was going to affect to be misremembered.
Uh, so can I, so let me, I'll I'll send a follow up email on that.
It was mostly, it's a, most of all.
Yep, and it's like next to mass transit and regional bus systems are actually irrelevant to.
Well, we, we do have that new monorail work, but yeah, so. That's a, you might miss that system, so. Famous.
Um, common driveways and flag lots, uh, that comes from a zoning bylaw review committee. Um, and then I think we're going, uh, I'm going to talk with the town planner, but I think we're going to strike this one about grammatical changes and updates. Um, and so we have, this is a lot of zoning changes in here, so um, we'll come back at annual town meeting and say, now that all of these things are in here, um, you know, we'll format them all completely. Um, the town clerk has come to me and asked about um, possibility of getting a a software um, or a web based client for um, housing by laws rather than a word document that she goes in and edits in PDFs and posts on our website. Um, so Millville, not to disparage Millville, but Millville, well, places has a great um, system to, we've had where it's almost like, you know how Cornell's Law School does, you know, US code and everything that's hosted there, um, it does that for your local bylaws and um, has a audit trail for changes and you can attach things and attorney general decisions. Um, and I think it's much easier for the public to navigate as well.
So that's something that plugs into Civic Clerk if you will, check that.
I don't think they have.
Feel like they do everything, they don't do that. Just trying to keep all the software in one place.
At last, um, so we'll possibly come back to that one and I think that's all that's here. I am meeting with Capitol Planning on Monday and then the next Monday as well to go through our prioritization matrix. Um, we're supposed to meet on June, not this past Monday, the one before, um, and I just didn't have all the department. Didn't have police, fire and parks back, so to have a prioritization decision without any sort of vehicle data, uh, I want to get it all together. Uh, so we'll be meeting, they'll have a recommendation. Um, and I anticipate they would want to come to the October 1st meeting um, to say this is our prioritization on Capitol um, for special.
They had a chance to speak to the department heads or it's been through you?
It's been through me. Um, we're going to invite the ones they want to speak with on the 29th, go through their process on the 22nd on Monday and then break.
You have a sense for what a free catch is going to start to look like?
Accounting doesn't give me much, um, but probably in the 1.2, 1.5 million, maybe. That's still my guess based upon um, early, so that that actually doesn't include some pretty big chunks of prior year tax that we got. Um, I don't know where we actually counted that. I can't recall if it was, if it was June or after.
Yeah, that number's good. I'm happy with that. Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty significant, right? That's there.
Yeah, I mean, police turn back over 100,000 in salaries. We were, um, marijuana revenue just was on a zero dollar budget. So all of that's kind of gravy. We had like 300,000 left, 280 or whatever was left over. I think we closed in chapter 90 deficits. So even if we just squeak out some stuff marginally, um,
Like 800.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
I'd said, I'd said at the end of Q3, like a million, million and a half was my idea and I I think that's still where we are.
We could pay the power bill then.
Easy.
Yeah, that's what I got.
All right. I didn't see anything about not. I didn't see anything about not able to do jokes as a Select Board.
We're just a requirement.
All right. So you're up next with the Town Administrator Report.
All right. I've got a, I've got a long list here, but I'll, I'll just try to stay high level on them. Started doing lovely meetings with Department Heads. It's been great setting their fiscal twenty six goals, trying to get people to think about what success looked like for you. And a lot of, a lot of the time, the answer is, you know, continue to provide blah, 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 whatever the service is, but then this one extra thing. So I'm just trying to get folks in the growth mindset about and about, about what their departments look like. In one of those meetings, I talked with the assessor about what new growth was for fiscal twenty twenty six. So it's as of July first. And we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget. New growth came in at about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That is almost entirely driven by eighty five percent completion of the twenty three Cape Road warehouse. So that's about fifteen million dollars in value and a hundred and something thousand dollars in, in taxes and new growth in taxes. So we don't have one another, one of those coming on in fiscal twenty seven. So we'll probably see more muted new growth going forward. But we'll have essentially a hundred and ten thousand dollars additional in our tax recap. So how that works on whether we additionally appropriate, so that's can be where the Fire Department lease money comes from, right? We won't have to use free cash to do it. We can, we can raise and appropriate by resetting our certified new growth number. And then we can either appropriate some more funds or we can reduce our local receipt assumptions, be more conservative there and assure some more free cash in the backend. I'll have a recommendation on that once we get the actual certified new growth numbers. Had some preliminary meetings with council and department heads about collective bargaining. So just going through line by line the contracts saying what do you as a department head want out of this next session? Have some first meeting set with, with some of the unions working on the other two. Had a meeting with MAC, Board of Directors, the Regional Dispatch Group where, you know, the merger with Semerac is kind of on hold as the state does a study and figures out how that would look. So the Board wants to go ahead with its own kind of organic growth and see what an expansion of our region would look like to, to find some more cost, you know, economies of scale and cost efficiencies there. So we, we may do a both and grow and then merge. I've been with a couple of groups recently. I said Capital, I met with the Library Trustees. I'm going to Concom next week. So I think it's been a couple of months since I got out to a bunch of other meetings. So I think this month I've been, I go to eight. So trying to get, you know, FaceTime with, with, with those constituencies. Speaking of other boards, planning vacancy, want to talk about when either this board visits planning or planning visits here to interview the two. We have two candidates interested in the planning board vacancy. Initially, planning had wanted to invite you to their October sixth meeting. We're going to talk about it here, but they have a member who can't be there and they want to have a full contingent. So this board's opinion on whether October first, we kind of have a lot going on with G B R C Highway and Capital Planning coming. So I don't know if we want.
Yeah, if, if they're okay with the fifteen.
Does everybody, does anyone have a conflict with the fifteenth? You all plan on being on the fifteenth?
Yeah, we're the first in the fifteenth.
There isn't like another planning board meeting?
That's the only one they have planned in October.
Okay, yeah.
So you know, when another board comes, it's usually a longer discussion, so.
And this will not be like the other committee appointments where they met with the board first and they came with a recommendation. This is going to be essentially the first pass at either of these candidates for both boards to ask questions. In the same vein, Parks, they just kind of wrapped up the busy season. So I'm trying to get a date nailed down with the Parks Commissioners, but it had, they don't have a lot in front of them right now in the way the planning kind of consistently does. So it hasn't ever already there. So we'll do that after, after planning to, to fill that vacancy. We had our first hiccup with tariffs. So our hose lengths that we ordered for the Fire Department come from Canada. And we have a signed quote, but not a signed purchase order, signed contract or anything like that. So the twenty five percent tariffs have been absorbed twenty five or fifteen percent by the distributor, by the importer, five percent by the, by who we're buying it from. They passed on a five percent tariff to us. So I have a so I have a question into, but we purchased it through a state contract, so which has guaranteed pricing. So I don't know what force majeure is there. So I have a question into Operational Services Division and Town Council on our end to say, so what I've instructed the chiefs to do is once we take delivery of the lengths of the hose lengths, pay the invoice for the hose lengths, hold it and short pay it. Don't pay the tariffs until we have some resolution on what our obligation is there. So we're going to pay for the product we get, but then what are obligations there? But yeah, that's the first one. But kind of what that showed is the need to tighten up our purchasing agreements, our arrangements, which is one of my goals for fiscal twenty six. And have, you know, signed and sealed, you know, contracts and purchasing agreements that would define this on the front end rather than figure out back end. We just accept, the board just accepted donations to Rock the Block. I had a debrief with the organizers earlier this week. Apart from the rain, even with the rain, said it went off great. I had my daughter's two year old birthday party, so I didn't, I didn't get to go. She loved the rain, so that's great. So I spoke with the organizers. They ran a deficit in terms of what they were to raise and what they spent and stuff. I had some questions on who actually gets the money raised while they're there. So I have some questions about the structure of the event and the town's involvement in, in running it through our ledger going forward that I've communicated to the organizers and they said they'd be willing to come to the Select Board and, and talk through that a little bit. Said later in October, early November, just because we're two years out, it's not a super pressing matter, but I, I have some concerns about it. So I want to give them the, the same airtime that I do. In twenty seventeen, there was, yeah, twenty seventeen, the three hundred and fiftieth celebration account was made. And that was transferred over to a community celebrations account. So there is money available there to support this deficit and to pay the, it's like two thousand eight hundred dollars or something. And then to pay the details for police, fire and highway who worked through that. So we'll all put that on that account. But I just want to make sure, again, same vein is tightening up purchasing, that if it's being run through the town ledger, like I have a better sense of what you know, the budget is and what the money in and money out is, because there was nothing about the process that prevented it from being thirty thousand dollars instead of three thousand. I have an update after talking with council about the Trask Road property that we, the board discussed before. So I'll put that into an email and get it out to everybody. And if it needs to be in a future agenda item, it can be, but I think it will suffice. Personnel policy will have in October. It's been reviewed by, reviewed by Labor Council. So thanks Jen for your work on it. So it's been reviewed by Labor Council. Jen and I are now going through it, giving it its back. So a couple of weeks, we'll be ready to go. And then we'll dive into getting finance policy in part of you after that. And kind of on the personnel policy side, we've talked about how, so the state has a program, paid family medical leave that's paid for through our employer and employee tax. And municipalities are exempt from this needing to implement it. There is a mechanism, mechanism by which municipalities can join P F M L, none have. But there are a number of communities which have implemented kind of their own paid family medical leave regime, and it's become not a not ubiquitous, but it's become a popular recruitment tool in some, some communities. So Jen's exploring that a little bit. Politics and optics wise, I said, please have that after my parental leave that I plan to take next year. We're not doing that in advance of my leave. I will be the champion for it once I come back, but I don't want that to be the.
Ten months, please.
Yeah. And then just personally, I'm working from home tomorrow. If anybody stops in, give me a call. I'm trying to get that capital stuff out and everybody stops in my office all the time. So if I have a really big project I need to focus on for four or five hours, it's easier. And then I'm out of the office on October second, third in a couple of weeks. And that's, that's what I got.
All right. So number fifteen, future agenda items, presentation on the Senior Work Off Program. This is something that we talk about each year. And the TAs look into arranging a meeting. It's not on the schedule yet.
Yeah, so this is, I, I have had a difficult time getting a straight answer on who gets to set all the parameters. So there's the the parameter on how much each individual can earn is set by the state. It's an IGR. You can make one thousand five hundred dollars per individual in this program. But then how many individuals can participate in it? And what is the municipality's overall cap is a decision for us. And I've just gotten a lot of passive voice. And once it's decided and when we want to, and I, I want to know, is it the Board of Assessors or is it the Select Board who gets to vote to set what the cap for this program is? And so trying to figure that out before it's been a little squishy. So I'm trying to get legal opinion on that. My anticipation is that because we're raising, raising it on the levy and we put it in part of our budget as a raising for, because it gets paid out of what's called overlay or reserved for abatements and exemptions, but everyone calls it overlay. That the Select Board should have say over that because it is, is an expenditure. It is raising something on the levy. But I think previously the Board of Assessors has.
It made recommendations.
We've always voted and they've sort of given us, yeah.
Are collectively agreed upon. It's never been an issue because we always agree on.
So I want to kind of get that process buttoned up because we, we should be revisiting it yearly, even if it's to say no changes. So we'll, we'll get that.
Is John still coming?
Yep.
Okay. And you're working with Dylan on fee structure and bylaw?
Both, yeah, plant inventory and fee structure. That was, has kind of taken a backseat to town meeting stuff as Dylan's returning the bylaws.
Yeah.
In place. So we'll revisit that probably, not necessarily after town meeting, but after the warrant stuff.
Yeah, they reached out on a bunch of things. We should expect annual town meeting will have a lot more planning stuff on it as well.
Can I just request when, when you talk about the highway severely coming in, we just can't even address both the this access road, which.
They're not there.
Yeah, I don't believe, I don't believe it ever was, then we decided it was abandoned. I think there was a whole, there was a landowner.
Yeah, we might need to do some research.
Yes, it was declared to be abandoned, but it was never. You know.
Yeah, it's my, it's my recollection that you can abandon it as a public way, but it still exists as a paper street and the municipality still.
It's still had the access.
It's on all the maps. So you can see.
The only, the only difference, but the whole idea of banning it means that you don't have to maintain it, right? Like plow it.
I, I will also say about the road maintenance plan, if there are specific things that require a little bit of research or data or contextualization that you want to see in this presentation, send them to me ahead of time and I'll make sure it gets over to John rather than ask him something on the spot. He'll say, I'll get back to you if that's not as productive.
You already, you already have the piece of the.
Trask Road.
Yeah, off of.
John.
Please add that on there because.
Yeah, we, we talked about it's, it's a, it's a public way, which is not currently reasonably passable.
Is there something available to look at? Because I can't tell you that for questions. Let's see what I don't always present. So.
My, my assumption is it's something based on the road study we did a few years back. What his current state is, what the future plan is in terms of the amount of money he has in Chapter Ninety, et cetera.
That was like a roadmap style.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I mean, it's something different or anything like that. I mean, if you can give us a hint, we can give you context.
Yeah, so my, he's in, he's in Europe right now. I'll have him back next week. But.
Don't call him.
He, yeah, it's, we had talked about if the town continues to appropriate additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year, what, what, what does that do for the remains?
But also specifically, I want to know what we're going to do this coming fiscal year because I get questions all the time about what road's being done. So it's got to be, this is our plan, it's subject to change, but this is, so we get a question, we can say, that's actually targeted for twenty seven.
Yep.
Twenty, you know.
That will a hundred percent be there. The, the big one is we're coordinating with the folks, with the contractors who are doing the traffic light at Hartford Abbey East, Plain Street, Talbot Farm. The general contractor there, La France, their subcontractor for paving is Harshaw. And the firm that won our bid for Million Paving in Mendon is Harshaw as well. So we're going to be able to more readily coordinate. So we don't have seams in the middle of a brand new intersection. You can just pave it all.
So is it, does that mean that I don't somebody backed out of that bid?
So Milford did not renew their paving bid at a juncture somewhat close to the end of fiscal year. So we went out and did our own paving bid for work in town and closed it three weeks ago, maybe. And they were the awarded contractors.
Still on track for this year.
That's what I felt. I am increasingly skeptical in that they said they were going to do it in April and then June.
Is there a new, new month target?
It has to be done by November when the asphalt.
Right, sure. Historically, it's been Thanksgiving-ish, but they've been pushing it December.
What about, what about the one forty Hartford Ave? Right now then.
The new intersection?
Yeah, because it's been wide and they put the sidewalk in and I see, you know, that not, nothing is. Vegetation hasn't been cut down, but the sidewalk has been. Yeah, sidewalks and, but they haven't moved the traffic lights.
I'm not, I'm not sure about that one. That's.
I know that's state action, but I know that's going to be all part of that.
It has to be coordinated with the opening of Cape Road too, because that the whole point, but then there was still a lot of bigger trucks.
And the, and the, there's also the water main.
Right.
The, it should have changed the location of itself.
So it'll be a mess.
Any, any work being done on a road anywhere in town, John's going to be prepared to answer your question. Yeah, I guess that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I would say, I'd be curious, just any, any update to Route Six, Route sixteen work in terms of timing and stuff?
Yeah, they're going to do a little bit of mobilization stuff, but nothing traffic disruptive this fall and then the disruptive stuff will start in the spring.
You go. How about the sip of Walmart?
Yeah, so put together a task force on it and they said our preference is to not move it. And I said. Yeah, and they said DOT told us we didn't have to two years ago. Okay, two months ago, they told us we did. So I've communicated to them and to DOT, I said, our, if, if it can still be engineered where we can just move it and maybe shrink the granite face and keep it in the general spot, that's our preference. But I've tasked the task force with coming up with a secondary location as to where they want it and said we need a vote at the October first meeting. So there will be something on the agenda for you all to vote. And with their recommendation for October first, my suggestions to them were Founder's Park, Memorial Park, things that are currently open space that would be suitable for a monument. So, see.
All right. So we talked about the Parks Commissioner appointment and the planning appointment previously. Yes, you could do one.
We're talking about streets, Providence Street, Colbert. So had, we've got, I'll, I'll have official documentation. Once we get the documentation for you all to accept the grants, but we have a hundred thousand dollar engineering grant from DOT and a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar engineering grant from DER, the Division of Ecological Restoration. And then we will, we're in line, we're a great candidate for a five hundred thousand dollar grant for construction in the spring. Frustrating meeting with DOT where they kept calling the grant a million dollars and I couldn't find any documentation on that. So they're going to send something follow up, but if we, there's a million dollar grant available, even, even better. But I'm operating on the assumption that it's half a million dollars because that's what's on Grant Central. And so that plan is to put the, 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 I think it's a February or March deadline for the construction grant. So we want to have, you know, close to a hundred percent construction documents done at that point. Put it to bid in the March, April timeframe and then get started construction in, in the, maybe the June timeframe. And we're looking at probably a four month closure of Providence Street right there. It is the recommendation of our consultant, our engineers, traffic consultant and public safety to not make cemetery two way, to keep cemetery one way. So that's part of what I'm joining Concom about because they're having a, a hearing about it. I don't talk about that. So both, or not both, the width of the road might be okay, but public safety is concerned about people not kind of recognizing it's a two way, just as, like, you know, their lived experience is one way and what that means even no matter how much we sign it. Concerned about gravel trucks from Blackstone that are completely weighted up Cemetery Street instead of empty on the way back and what that does for the degradation of the road because it's not kind of made for that right now. And then folks trying to take a left turn at the top of Cemetery Street kind of be a nightmare. Taking a left turn onto Cemetery Street right now gets pretty backed up. So having both without a signalized intersection would, would not be ideal for traffic.
Haven't we already decided it's not going to be a two way?
So I, every time we have a meeting about it and there's members of the public there, they ask us, is Cemetery going to be a two way? Why or why not? Comes up all the time. So I'm.
It's already been decided, but we don't keep restating it. It's already been decided, but we have to keep restating it. Because we want to keep people alive.
But that, it will be a roughly four month disruption, um, next summer, Providence Street.
Uh, alright, and back to me.
One question about future topics. Are we going to get a presentation about the abacus study?
Yes, that's what I joined the trustees about last week in, in part, joined them in a couple of other things. Um, so they're in their like, they were doing measurements and site analysis on some stuff, uh, maybe about a month ago when I talked to them, when we had our last meeting. Um, so, yeah, certainly. That, that can go on the list.
Cause I get asked about that one.
And the, uh, so, uh, Tom Rolle will be here on our next meeting to talk about the GBRC. Uh, and their, and their general, it's where they are in their review process and, you know, what they see coming forth in annual town meeting. Um, so that will be minus the noise regulation. We, we can talk about it while he's here, but Carl just gave us a very thorough presentation. Tom is going to come talk to us about the rest of, the rest of the story. And our next two meetings are October first and October fifteenth. Um, so we just got abacus. Is there anything else anybody wants to see coming up? As always, you can email me and Jeremy and we'll get it on there. Um, and then our final thing is, uh, an executive session for purpose three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And the chair so declares, the board will not reconvene in an open session. So we will adjourn from our executive session. Um, and so I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with unions. As conducting this discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And the chair so declares, the board will not return to open session after the executive session solely for the purpose of adjourning and will adjourn from executive session. Any discussion? All those in favor, uh, roll call, Kuter, I? Alright, uh, motion passes. Uh, thank you very much to the public and, uh, we will see you next time.